Welcome, everybody, to the West Ocean Township Board Supervisors' Conditional Use Hearing, July 24, 2024. We're going to begin the hearing tonight with the Pledge of Allegiance. If you could please rise.
I would like to say...
Okay, so, before the Board of Supervisors this evening is the Conditional Use Application Number 3-2024. The applicant, the PA State System of Higher Education, or Westchester University, is seeking conditional use approval pursuant to the township zoning ordinance in order to install temporary modular housing at 814 South Matlack Street. An ordinance amendment was approved by the Board on April 2, 2024, to allow this use by conditional use in this zoning district. The property is located in the Plann University Main Campus Overlay Zoning District Class 2. The application was reviewed by the Planning Commission at their meeting on July 9, 2024, and the application was recommended for approval. The Planning Commission did not have any recommended conditions. A notice was issued to surrounding property owners within 500 feet of the subject property on July 10, 2024. Additionally, the property was posted with a notice about this evening's hearing on July 17, 2024. Required legal advertisements ran in the July 9, 2024, and July 16, 2024 additions of the Daily Local News, and an application before the Board was posted on the township website with the materials for this evening. Before we begin and open the hearing, I would like to announce that we're going to try and keep this to about 8:30 tonight, so we've got a good two and a half hours. Hopefully, we can get everything covered, but we'd like to end by 8:30. And with that, I'm going to hand it over to our solicitor for this evening, Mr. Ryan Jennings.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just wanted to indicate that the Board, in accordance with the timing requirements of the Pennsylvania Municipalities Planning Code, is timely convening tonight's public hearing, including a waiver from those very requirements from the applicant. Just by way of some procedural ground rules here, the hearing is being transcribed by a court reporter, and therefore, we must conduct this hearing in an orderly fashion. In order to assure orderly decorum, only one person may speak at a time. At the outset, we also need to address party status. In order to determine if anyone aside from the applicant would like to receive party status, I first want to explain what that means for the public at large. In order to request party status, you must demonstrate legal standing. In order to establish legal standing, you must be a person or an entity who owns or rents property in close proximity to the subject property. As indicated by the Board's chairperson, that property being 814 South Matlack Street, parcel ID numbers 52-5P-47-E and parcel 52-5P-49-E. In order to be potentially aggrieved by an outcome that this Board ultimately renders on the application, again, the person must or entity must be aggrieved or impacted by the decision. So, at this time, I would like to announce that you need not request party status if you're here for purposes of simply monitoring the application, or if you're interested in rendering public comment. Everyone in this room, should they so desire, will be afforded an opportunity to render public comment before the hearing record is closed and before this Board deliberates. Having party status would also afford that individual or that entity an appellate right by way of land use appeal with the Chester County Court of Common Pleas. So, at this time, I'm going to ask if anyone in the gallery is interested in requesting party status.
Jonathan Holton, on behalf of the Borough of Westchester, we're requesting party status, and you're requesting the hearing be...
Okay, first and foremost, let's hear from the applicant's counsel on the Borough's request for party status. Is there a position?
Yes, good evening. Brian Nagel, on behalf of the applicant. I don't believe that the Borough of Westchester is entitled to party status in this proceeding. They don't own an adjacent property. There's no adjacent roadway that they own. They do not own Matlack Street. They do not own, as far as I know, Rose Dale Street, and even that is too far away to give the Borough an interest in this application that would rise above the ordinary interest of any resident who lives in this general area. The law requires a greater interest than that, specific interest. There's no hard and fast rule in terms of the distance. Generally, we use somewhere in the ballpark of 500 feet. And again, it's not a hard and fast rule, but I believe the closest area of the borough is 800 or over 800 feet away from the site where the proposed modular student housing is located. I would have kept on that basis.
Understood, thank you. Mr. Long, would you like to respond at this time to the objections and points raised by Mr. Nagel?
Yes. A little bit of distance. I did a little bit of measuring myself. That was on Google Maps, but to the center of Rose Dale Avenue, which is my understanding, the Borough belongs to half of Rose Dale and the township owns the other half, it's approximately 750 feet. As Council stated, there is no hard and fast rule. There's case law out there where party status is granted to parties up to a half mile or a mile away, depending on due to the status. Obviously, without libating it at this point, Borough has concerns about, you know, concentration of student housing in a certain location, a changed pattern of movement, which would affect leasing within the borough as well as public worth, things of that nature. So, the Borough does believe that we are, that it is aggrieved enough to leave the party status. Additionally, I want to raise attention to, there is case law out there in which a neighboring municipality has been allowed to intervene in zoning hearings. In a neighboring municipality, there's a given happens on shared services, things of that nature, and shared facilities, not only does the Borough own one half of Rose Dale Avenue, but there's also the Borough Park right at the edge of the Borough, up against the township. So, that would be our argument on that point. Thank you.
Any brief response?
In working on other matters, it's my understanding that the Borough does not own Rose Dale Avenue. Rose Dale Avenue is owned by West Ocean Township. So, I think the first property that the, that would be within the Borough would be on the other side. And obviously, Mr. Long and I took about the same measurement, and it's about 100 feet. He said 750 to the middle of Rose Dale. I don't think that's where you measured it. Again, with the scope of this application, the location of this application, I don't think the Borough has an interest that rises above. It goes beyond the general interest of the general public in the area, not specific interest that would be sufficient for them to have party status in this matter.
Thank you for that. This is an issue that I kind of anticipated at the outset, and this is a decision that this Board is going to have to preliminarily make before we get to the substance of the application. I have a number of maps in front of me with distances measured. I undertook the same sorts of exercises that you two gentlemen are speaking of here. Generally, in the same ballpark, taking the closest distance, going across East Rose Dale Avenue, I have a closest distance of 831 feet to the closest property, closest borough-owned property. In the other direction, to the northeast, a distance of 902 feet. So, it is beyond the 500 feet. I don't think there's any dispute about that. The distance to East Rose Dale Avenue itself is approximately 750 feet, not taking into consideration who owns what portions of East Rose Dale or who doesn't. So, the distances certainly play one factor in this determination. The other factor is the concept of being potentially aggrieved by the outcome rendered by the Board. So, before this Board is able to make a determination as to the Borough's request for party status, I would ask Mr. Long if he has any sort of additional legal argument to provide or analysis as far as, and to be aggrieved, there must be some sort of substantial direct and immediate effect or impact. How, Mr. Long, would you suggest that the Borough has a substantial direct and immediate interest in this matter?
Yeah, yeah, without libiting at all right now. At the same time, yeah, we're talking about potentially moving a large amount of student housing. Majority of the universities within the borough, so that means you're redirecting the direction and the traffic of various students, how they get to campus, how they're traveling from one part of campus to another. We're also talking about potentially, we're not talking about potentially, but are talking about getting rid of 140 parking spaces, parking within the university neighborhoods, which are right there, like South Walnut, South Matlack, South High Street, those areas are severely impacted by students and crushes students in that area. So, there's serious concerns about parking in that area, as well as, South Walnut and South Matlack tend to be the group for students, not tend to be, are the group for students to make their way into the borough, the center of town, to the bars, restaurants, things of that nature, and that has a severe impact on leasing, as well as public worth, trash, that kind of thing. These are all, you know, common issues that have existed in the borough and then university neighborhood areas. So, there's concern, that's the concern of the borough.
Thank you.
Mr. Jennings, Madam Chair, if you'll respond?
You may.
I would submit that those interests don't go beyond the interest of any resident in the general area, any resident of the borough. So, on that standard, you have to let any resident who lives in the borough come in as a party because the parking throughout the borough could be affected somehow by the greater university. We're not talking about the greater university. We're talking about a small, temporary, five-year modular housing installation on an existing parking lot. So, it doesn't have that reach. It doesn't have that impact, and I don't think the Borough has a greater interest in this application than it does members of the general public.
Thank you. Do any members of the Board have specific questions for either of these two gentlemen based on the Borough's request for party status before we deliberate?
Yes, I have one question. Mr. Long, did anyone from the Borough or yourself attend the Planning Commission meeting on July the 9th and raise any concerns and questions with them with regard to this in general, Madam?
We did not at that time. We preserved our right to come to this meeting instead.
Okay, thank you.
Any additional questions?
Yeah, Mr. Nagel, there is no rule, from what I understand, that would give the distance from the proposed location to give party status to any particular individual or organization or municipality. So, if it was 800 feet, 850 feet, whatever, I mean, that's not bound by any rule. Is that correct? There's not a specific distance requirement in the case law, but the circumstances where party status has been granted have looked at, does the individual have an interest that rises above the members of the general public, and are they in close enough proximity to the site to fold them into agreeing party status? So, you have to look at both of those factors. Generally, the courts have looked at 500, 600 feet as the range, but there's not a hard and fast rule on that. So, it's not to say there couldn't be a different distance under certain circumstances. I would submit, in this case, given the totality of the circumstances and the Borough's position, that they don't meet the standard to have party status. That would be my position.
But not solely based upon distance?
No, not solely based upon distance, but I think distance is a factor.
So, whether it be 500 feet, or 800 feet, or 700 feet, or whatever, that really should not be a primary consideration?
I don't know.
I mean, you said there was no rule, correct?
There's no hard and fast rule. There is a set of rules that involves a number of different factors that have to be looked at and evaluated for the Board to decide whether to grant party status. I don't think the Borough meets that here based on what Mr. Long articulated, based on the circumstances, based on the items that I addressed, both distance and those other factors being taken into consideration. I don't think they can. Like I said, the Borough doesn't even own Rose Dale Avenue. You're really talking about going into other properties beyond Rose Dale into the borough, and I don't think any of those properties would qualify for party status.
I have one question for Mr. Jennings. You mentioned that the closest borough-owned property was 831 feet. What is that property specifically?
It is the park located off of East Rose Dale Avenue. It is a 1.33 acre parcel, and its parcel ID number is 1-13-5.
Thank you.
And I'm more than willing to share these maps that I'm referencing with anyone here this evening. They are not part of the hearing record as of yet. I suppose that they could be.
One last follow-up on that. Are there individual residences that are privately owned, not borough properties, closer than 831 feet that, you know, are on Rose Dale Avenue? I presume there are.
I presume there are. They are most definitely beyond the 500-foot distance. They are most definitely beyond the 600-foot distance, but I did not measure, and again, I'm using the county's Chesco mapping system. I did not measure from each and every individual parcel, but I have lots of measurements.
Thank you.
If I may make one other final point. I know we're discussing party status, or at the same time, as I mentioned, there is case law out there in which a neighboring municipality has been granted the right to intervene in zoning hearings in a neighboring municipality. And I'm specifically talking about a case involving Redarby Township and Havreford Township, where they, Havreford Township intervened in Redarby. And basically, the reason for doing that was because of the close proximity of the property to the border, between the property, between municipalities, and the effect that it was going to have related to things like trash, traffic, things of that nature. So, I mean, we are kind of making a dual request here about either party status or the right to intervene. So, that's, from my understanding, per the case law, if not a whole hot case law in it, it seemed to be basically up to the discretion of the Board at that time when the neighboring municipality intervened.
Just to be clear, the case that you referenced, the subject parcel I issued in that application actually bordered the municipal boundary, which is a distinguishing characteristic from this particular instance, right?
Yes.
Mr. Jennings, I have one additional point on that.
Sure.
That the case law, the, I think the way I read the case law, being an adjacent municipality doesn't tie with to party status or intervention. In that case, it was really the proximity that I picked up at the end. Certainly, I would dispute that a neighboring municipality could be a party under the right circumstances. I just don't think those circumstances are present in this case.
Understood.
So, Mr. Jennings, one follow-up on that. So, I presume there are other cases where municipalities have requested to be a party to a hearing and been denied by it. This is the second time this has ever happened. Am I correct?
I cannot confirm or deny that. I suspect that it has occurred. There's just, as counsel has indicated, there's not a lot of case law on that, and I did not come across a particular Pennsylvania case with that particular set of circumstances.
If the Board has no further questions at this time, Mr. Jennings, would it be appropriate for the Board to take a brief executive session and caucus in the next room to discuss this issue?
Absolutely. That was going to be our next step. Before we do, just out of an abundance of caution, I want to see if there is anyone else in the room interested in party status. Yes, sir?
Good evening. Michael Karthy, President of Fame Fire Company, speaking here on behalf of the Fame Fire Company. Would you like to press party status?
May I have an address for the fire?
200 East Rose Dale Avenue, along the corner of East Rose Dale and South Matlack.
Do you know if your fire company received mailed notice from the township regarding tonight's hearing?
Yes, we did.
Okay. Mr. Nagel, is there any objection to that request for party status?
No objection.
Any additional requests? Yes?
Shannon Manveen, CHI-N-N-O-N-N-A-N-V-E-N, 711 South Matlack Street. Within the 100 line, I agree, it's outside 500 foot distance, but I believe that I'd be specifically agreeing based on the increased foot traffic, the student flow, the trash that would accumulate from front yard, and the change in traffic pattern necessary to occur straight down Matlack Street, reside in that direction.
Thank you. Any additional requests? Yes?
Linda Wong, I'm at 711...
I'm sorry, can you say your name again?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm at 711 South Matlack Street. Linda Wong, GLA-U-M. And have the same concerns as Shannon does because there's a lot of foot traffic that comes down High Street, especially when the bars went out, which is the language that she was like. So, it would just be an increase in that foot traffic along with traffic with cars going straight down Matlack, and there'd be different intersections that I would be able to accomplish.
Mr. Nagel, any objection to the request for party status of Ms. Manveen or Ms. Cologne?
Yes, objection to vote.
Okay. Any additional requests for party status?
Ann Carroll, Vice Chair of Civic Action Southeast. Civic Action Southeast is a community organization that was incorporated in 1985 and has existed actively since. Our borders are Rose Dale Avenue, High Street, Magnolia Street, and the railroad tracks, if that helps you. We represent individuals like the two who have asked for party status before. We have active members who live in the area, including on Rose Dale Avenue at its easternmost end, and I can, I can only ask that if the requesting entity for this conditional use is mainly in the Borough of Westchester, and this use is serving their purposes, which largely impact our neighborhood in both parking and traffic, car and/or foot, that validates our participation.
Ms. Carroll, I just have a follow-up question. I know that you identified a border for your civic association. Is there a designated address or parcel that's affiliated with this organization?
My address, which is Bogos and South Franklin Street, or the Chair's address, which is 726 South Hen Street.
Okay.
And the Chair would have been here tonight, but I have a feeling the accidents and her health prevent it then.
Understood. Did you receive mailed notice of tonight's hearing?
No, other than information through the Borough of Westchester. And I did attend the, not the planning meeting, but the other one on the hotel, and we understood what was happening here, as Mr. Long said, that this was coming to conditional use.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Nagel, any objection to Ms. Carroll's request for party status on behalf of the Civic Action?
May I request a brief plot here?
Sure, granted.
Ms. Carroll, good evening.
Good evening.
Does the civic association own any real estate?
Does the civic association own any real estate?
No, we do. No, we do not.
Do you have a resolution from the civic association approving the request of party status on this proceeding this evening?
No, we do not.
Thank you.
We were hoping that, may I add, we were hoping that the borough of Westchester, for all of the reasons that I stated, would be granted party status because our representative is here, and that is the person with whom we communicate.
Understood.
Thank you.
The applicant would object for party status for the civic association.
Understood. So five requests have been made for party status. Are there any more? Mr. Nagel, just to be clear, on behalf of the applicant university, you have objected to four of the five requests for party status. The one that you have not objected to is the Fame Fire Company, correct?
May I have a moment?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Jennings. Confirmed.
Thank you. Any additional questions for members of the board? At this time, Madam Chair, I would suggest that we take a brief recess for the purposes of deliberating in executive session on the lone subject matter of the requests for party status.
Okay, sounds good. Let's do it.
We are off the record. We are recessed for a minimum of ten minutes, if not more.
No, because I don't want to recite that first line. It's okay. Just be careful, we're live streaming, so just be careful of what you say. That's okay. Jeff.
I think my wife's gonna be like, "Oh, gee, you're crazy."
I guess it's probably the best for the citizens.
Thank you. You were a problem. We've made a little rate event.
I think we're like-
I guess it's probably the best for the citizens.
I guess it's probably the best for the citizens.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I guess it's probably the best for the citizens.
I guess it's probably the best for the citizens.
I guess it's probably the best for the citizens.
I guess it's probably the best for the citizens.
I guess it's probably the best for the citizens.
I guess it's probably the best for the citizens.
I guess it's probably the best for the citizens.
I guess it's probably the best for the citizens.
I guess it's probably the best for the citizens.
I guess it's probably the best for the citizens.
I guess it's probably the best for the citizens.
I guess it's probably the best for the citizens.
I guess it's probably the best for the citizens.
I guess it's probably the best for the citizens.
I guess it's probably the best for the citizens.
I guess it's probably the best for the citizens.
I guess it's probably the best for the citizens.
I guess it's probably the best for the citizens.
I guess it's probably the best for the citizens.
I guess it's probably the best for the citizens.
I guess it's probably the best for the citizens.
I guess it's probably the best for the citizens.
I guess it's probably the best for the citizens.
I guess it's probably the best for the citizens.
I guess it's probably the best for the citizens.
I guess it's probably the best for the citizens.
I guess it's probably the best for the citizens.
I guess it's probably the best for the citizens.
I guess it's probably the best for the citizens.
I guess it's probably the best for the citizens.
I guess it's probably the best for the citizens.
I guess it's probably the best for the citizens.
I guess it's probably the best for the citizens.
I guess it's probably the best for the citizens.
I guess it's probably the best for the citizens.
I guess it's probably the best for the citizens.
I guess it's probably the best for the citizens.
I guess it's probably the best for the citizens.
I guess it's probably the best for the citizens.
I guess it's probably the best for the citizens.
I guess it's probably the best for the citizens.
I guess it's probably the best for the citizens.
I guess it's probably the best for the citizens.
I guess it's probably the best for the citizens.
I guess it's probably the best for the citizens.
I guess it's probably the best for the citizens.
I guess it's probably the best for the citizens.
I guess it's probably the best for the citizens.
I guess it's probably the best for the citizens.
I guess it's probably the best for the citizens.
I guess it's probably the best for the citizens.
I guess it's probably the best for the citizens.
I guess it's probably the best for the citizens.
I guess it's probably the best for the citizens.
I guess it's probably the best for the citizens.
I guess it's probably the best for the citizens.
I guess it's probably the best for the citizens.
I guess it's probably the best for the citizens.
I guess it's probably the best for the citizens.
I guess it's probably the best for the citizens.
Twenty locations in PA. So it's got sort of family.
Which one is?
Um, Casa.
Oh, Pizza Hut.
Yeah.
That's one.
Yeah.
But that's connected with the other ones. One is right on thirty. They can make that get us pound. Same pound, same pound. Because the food is very simple. Both are very simple. Did you, did you there?
Yeah. And they were still something on Friday too. It was Friday. We got there late.
Yeah, you just can't go to my head. Yes, I heard that.
So you're separating, you're getting Christian all the right. Check with Cajun restaurant. A little bit so.
Yeah, that was good. That was not.
But they have Creole food.
You replace more sessions with Creole.
Like high street. Brian picked me up at lunch. After they had been here.
Actually, they're all.
That's nice down there. They used to do it. What's that? Those side canines deserve. Choicing. And then Hershey Barber, I think it was Twizzlers. From its full size of these five, it's been gameish dessert. So, yeah, it was very kiss time. We have two years. Oh, not yet, should be thirteen.
You should go to.
But we have their own temperature. Always been there since before COVID.
If it's even still there.
It's saggy.
Were you going out that way?
Yes, you got it.
How you doing?
I'm good, okay, I got yourself.
One day is time, man.
Yep.
One day.
You know, I probably. I know that like.
Yeah.
I haven't been out here yet. But it probably take. I don't see anything. I like the fish. I work for the. So I'm not like an official. So I just.
So it's just, if not every letter is on there, a combination of things to one letter is one word. Yeah. That's, that's the, that's the training of it. So we, like, if you got up here to testify, give me exactly what you were gonna say ahead of time. Like it's murder, but it did one bucks and the whole table pop up. But then if you change one word, now, you know, it doesn't quite work that way. But, you know, like, because I work at the court house. And, you know, criminal trial and all that, it's all the same stuff, just in terms of order. So you have, you know, you just get used to the same things over and over. Okay, nice. You said out loud?
Yeah. She moved in, I, I was there first, she moved in, I got married first out. Yeah, I lived directly next to her. She was the only one who was the first.
Okay, thank you, everybody, for your patience. We are going to resume tonight's conditional use hearing. And I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Jennings.
Thank you. First and foremost, I would just like to publicly disclose that I do, in a separate, private matter, represent the legal interests of Shannon and Christopher Mandine. Ms. Mandine is one of the five that requested party status. I did not inform the board of that prior to the board's deliberation so as to not poison the well, so to speak. They had free deliberation without any knowledge of potential or current representation. I would just like to ask Ms. Mandine at this time if she is agreeable to proceed with my participation here this evening, as well as her potential participation.
I have no issue with it, Mr. Jennings, it's a separate matter.
Thank you. Okay. So the board has met with me in executive session for the sole purpose of addressing the five requests for party status. Of those five requests, one will be granted. The township will grant party status to Mr. McCarthy on behalf of the Fame Fire Company located at two hundred East Rosedale Avenue. The other requests for party status are denied. That does not mean that those requesting party status or anyone else here this evening is not afforded an opportunity to provide public commentary. That time will come toward the end of the hearing process, before the hearing record is closed and before the board makes any efforts toward deliberation on this application. I have a number of board exhibits that I need to introduce into the hearing record at this time. Exhibit B one is the conditional use application with supporting documentation. Exhibit B two is a proof of publication with legal notice having appeared in the daily local news on both July ninth and July sixteenth, twenty twenty four. Exhibit B three is an affidavit of mailing to neighborhood property owners, which occurred on July ninth, twenty twenty four. Exhibit B four is an affidavit of property posting, which occurred on July seventeenth, twenty twenty four. Exhibit B five is applicant's written extension of time dated June seventh, twenty twenty four. Exhibit B six is notification to neighboring property owners dated June twenty fifth, twenty twenty four regarding the July ninth planning commission meeting. Exhibit B seven are the planning commission's draft meeting minutes of their July ninth, twenty twenty four meeting. I also feel it appropriate to include into the board's exhibits the various mapping that I made reference to at the outset this evening. Those maps will be marked as exhibit B eight. They will be supplied to the parties tomorrow morning via email. They are here to the extent anyone wishes to view them during the proceeding itself. The board also, by verbal reference, incorporates into the hearing record the West Goshen Township zoning ordinance and township zoning map. Mr. Nagel, any objection to any of the board's eight hearing exhibits?
No objection. I do have a question, Mr. Jennings.
Yes.
Was there a memo or a letter to the board of supervisors setting forth the action of the planning commission unanimous recommendation in favor of conditional use approval for this application?
There was. The board's chairperson did read verbatim from that memorandum, which you referenced at the outset of tonight's hearing as an introductory statement. But I do have that memorandum. I have not included it as a board exhibit. I think that the planning commission activities are more appropriately and comprehensively covered in exhibit B seven, which are the draft meeting minutes. Are you requesting that that memorandum be additionally supplemented to the board's exhibit packet?
I'll, I'll leave that to the township's discretion. But can you confirm that that memo is consistent with the July ninth, twenty twenty four planning commission minutes in reflecting a eight zero vote in favor of?
So the memorandum which you speak of does not reference how many votes. The draft meeting minutes, in fact, do. All eight votes to approve, zero vote opposed. So I do think that the minutes adequately cover that eight planning commission members voted in support of your application.
Very well, thank you.
Mr. McCarthy, could you approach to collect the board's exhibit packet? I feel it appropriate for you as a party to have the board's exhibits. Thank you.
And, Mr. Jennings, I have contact information for Mr. McCarthy that I can provide to you after the hearing.
Thank you. Mr. Nagel, one last piece of housekeeping. As you can see, there are four supervisors present here of a board typically comprised of five members. One is unavailable, and therefore, as I'm sure you're aware, if there is a two to two vote or deadlock, the result of the application would be a denial. Are you prepared and wanting to proceed this evening with the four supervisors hearing this application?
Can I have a moment, please?
Sure.
Madam Chairperson, Solicitor, I have to request a three-minute recess so I can discuss that issue with my client. I wasn't aware of that prior to being here tonight. I do have to discuss it with my client.
Understood.
Granted.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you for giving me a moment to discuss that with my client, and we are okay to proceed.
Thank you. All right, believe it or not, I think we are through all of the housekeeping. Mr. Nagel, the floor is yours to present your applicant's case in chief.
Thank you.
Thank you again. Good evening, Brian Nagel, on behalf of the West Chester University Pennsylvania State System of Higher Education. I'd like to just hand out a packet of premarked exhibits, if that's okay, before I start. With respect to A twelve of the exhibit packet, that's the traffic report. And that's a fairly voluminous report, so I included the report itself without the appendices in the packets that the board members and the other individuals who I gave a packet to, Mr. Long and a gentleman from, Mr. McCarthy from Fame Fire Company.
Mr. Nagel, we do have extra copies of the traffic report in case anyone would like to review that.
So, so it looks like Mr. Bayshore has about four copies, and then I placed two additional marked copies up on the dais, if anybody wants to look at the appendices. Just, just in addition to the summary, we've talked a fair amount already about the application itself. The purpose of the application is to provide a temporary modular student housing installation on the M one lot on the, on the borough, on the university's property to accommodate housing of university students while existing university student housing is renovated, so effectively swing space to enable the university to conduct renovations of existing student housing stock. Obviously, we're here this evening to seek conditional use approval under the township's ordinance. I have with me this evening, and if you could just give it a shell of hand when I say your name, so folks know who you are, Jeffrey Osgood, West Chester University Executive Vice President and Provost, Michelle Ginsburg, Executive Director, Facility Support for Auxiliary Buildings, Michael Joyce, P E, Project Engineer from Chester Valley Engineers, and Alex Meitzler, Traffic Engineer from Traffic Planning and Design. So with that, the applicant will call its first witness, Dr. Jeffrey Osgood.
Raise your right hand. Just wrote a testimony about the file be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God, or so you affirm.
Thank you. Dr. Osgood, could you please state your full name and your title?
Jeffrey L. Osgood, Jr., the Executive Vice President and Provost at West Chester University.
And what are your duties in that capacity?
I hold a dual appointment as the Executive Vice President and Chief Provost. One is the Chief Operating Officer of the institution, and the other is the Chief Academic Officer.
Are you familiar with applicant's exhibit A two, which is there on the podium and is the application that was filed with the township for conditional use approval?
Yes.
And that's for a temporary modular student housing facility to be installed on M one lot on university-owned property in West Goshen Township, correct?
That's correct.
And the university owns the M one lot property and the surrounding property that's improved with the Eo Bowl Center and the School of Music, correct?
Correct.
And the temporary student housing facility is proposed with one hundred and twenty-eight beds, correct?
Correct.
Why is the temporary student housing needed?
The temporary housing will allow us to renovate existing housing stock and to flex out students in existing residence halls to the temporary housing that allows us to achieve our modernization, my unfirst aid in housing.
I'm sorry, is your, is that microphone on? Move it up a little bit.
Is this better?
Yes, thank you.
I'm sorry.
Okay.
So when you say flex out, does that essentially mean you could take, for example, a floor of existing student housing offline, move the students into this facility, renovate the, the facility that, or the, or a floor of a facility, if you will, that you've, that you've emptied, and then those students can go back into that facility?
That's correct. The beds will allow us not to reduce our overall beds on campus while we renovate.
Is the temporary student housing that's proposed as part of this application being provided to support enrollment growth at the university?
No, it is not.
Is, is it fair to say that the enrollment at the university today is lower than it was, for example, in twenty twenty one?
Correct. At our height, we were over, just over seventeen thousand, six hundred students in fall of twenty twenty one. Our, we go by fall numbers to register our official enrollment in seven, at fall of twenty twenty three, we were at seventeen thousand, seventy-six students. And right now, we'll report this morning, and our best guess, and we've been accurate within less than one percent, will show us at seventeen thousand, one hundred students for this fall, the twenty-four.
And when you use the term "our best guess," would you say that's a highly educated estimate rather than a guess?
Yes, it is. In terms of one hundred and forty different variables that we utilize to create an estimate that I said that has far surpassed any level of confidence of the other state system institutions. And so like, that's why I was able to state clearly that our estimate has always fallen in with less than one percent of the final outcome number.
And is it fair to say that the university has a statutory obligation to educate students in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania?
Correct. That was recently affirmed through the last budget session.
And is it also fair to say that you can't necessarily dictate whether or not you have enrollment growth, but to the extent that you would in the future, this temporary student housing isn't there to serve that purpose, won't be utilized for that purpose?
Right, despite multiple pieces of legislation both signed by, multiple pieces of legislation signed by the governor recently during the budget process that provided a mandate for the state system of higher education to increase in a moment that is not part of our plan.
And you're aware that, under the ordinance through which the university applied for the temporary student housing, the university can install the temporary student housing for a period of five years, correct?
Correct.
And so is it the university's plan to make the renovations of the student housing that needs to be renovated over that period of time?
Correct.
And then once that's complete, the temporary student housing would be removed?
That's correct.
I have no further questions for Mr. Osgood, Dr. Osgood, excuse me.
Okay, so at this time, Mr. McCarthy, having been granted party status, do you have any questions for this witness based on his testimony provided here this evening?
No, sir.
Okay. I just have one question, and then I'll kick things over to the supervisors to the extent that they have questions. Mr. Nagel asked you about a five-year requirement or five-year maximum for duration for the renovation. And you stated that it's your intention to, at the five-year period, cease those, those temporary accommodations. Is there any plan or ability to do so in a sooner fashion, three years, four years? Or does the university at present plan to take the full five-year term?
I would say at present that they plan to take the full five-year term because we're still evaluating the financing options that are required for this extensive of a project that is, is estimated right now at nearly half a billion dollars.
Is it possible, if the university comes to learn that it can do so in a shorter duration, that it would do so?
We'd be happy to work with the township on achieving that.
Perhaps we start with the board's chairperson? Any questions?
I have no questions at this time for Dr. Osgood.
I have a couple of questions. The existing accommodations that are being renovated, when were they last renovated? What is, what is the kind of time scale in terms of, what was the kind of state of them versus when they were last updated or built in fact?
Supervisor Walsh, I don't have that, that information right off the top of my head. Many of the university-owned housing, which is Tyson, Goshen, Schmidt, Gillinger, date to the sixties and seventies. Their last renovation, we could get to you perhaps, and Chuggin' Brook would have that, but we don't have that with us right now.
Okay. Second question. The master plan that the university is working on with respect to a multitude of issues, one of the top priorities was student housing. So as the plan is completed this fall.
Yes, sir.
Certainly, there's been information, and I think you've spoken to it to the press as well, around the potential need to build new accommodation within the super block.
Yes, sir.
The indications seem to be that that would be on a longer timeframe in terms of the financing that's required, completion of the whole process, et cetera. So would this temporary housing play a role in that? And if so, would that mean that the whole project to build new accommodation in the super block would have to be completed within this five years?
So a couple things, Supervisor Walsh, that I think are important. The reason why the press contacted us about this is because they were present at a, at a borough council meeting. We did not see, got that press. To your other point about our master plan development, we are actually in the final stages of finalizing the student housing portion of that. As soon as we're in, we'd be happy to share that in its entirety. The planning for U N Cole currently calls for a ten-year time horizon for the completion of the entirety of the renovation and the addition of a new residence hall. To the point about the five-year period, we would, we understand that, that the township is very serious about that, so are we, meeting our obligations there. So our goal would be within that first five-year period to build the additional beds in the new facility, so we wouldn't need the additional modular housing beyond the five-year period that we are discussing today.
Thank you.
When would the renovations begin?
Well. We hope almost immediately, within a year of, of getting approval with the modular housing and also securing financing. We, because we belong to the state system of higher education, we do not have the same ability to go out for bonds on demand. We have to go through a, through a single point of sale on a yearly basis in the system. So we hope to start within a year.
So the modular, modular housing will accommodate one hundred and twenty-eight beds?
Correct.
Would you be renovating one hundred and twenty-eight beds as you go along, say, first semester, or how would that work?
It would, Supervisor, it would depend on whatever facility we were renovating. I did for, for College Arms, which has sixty beds that are currently slated for renovation. If we're going to take a floor, Tyson, Goshen, it'd be more, closer to one hundred now.
So how many total beds would, would we be talking about renovating?
So we have about fifty-four hundred beds, fifty-three, four hundred, fifty-three, fifty-four hundred beds on campus. Approximately twenty-four hundred of those are owned by the university's foundation. So the remaining three thousand, we're right about there, approximately, are owned by us. So we're talking about potentially three thousand beds.
I have a follow-up question related to the, the start of, for when the modular housing would be available and whether it would be occupied immediately it was available versus the start of renovations, which might take longer because of the need to secure the financing and that annual process. So would you? So would you put students, if this module, temporary modular housing was completed by the end of the year for the first semester next year, would you place students in it, even if you had not yet secured the financing at that point?
Well, some of the renovations, so particularly for College Arms, we have the current finance, the current reserves available to pay cash for that. We've taken about 60 beds offline already for the upcoming academic year. That would allow us to go ahead and start the College Arms renovation almost immediately, if that's indeed what makes sense within our master plan. There are other, but also we have the ability, some of our South Campus apartments, to take those offline as well now, immediately, and move those students to the college, to the modular housing. So we do have the ability to populate right away. We would not want that ability to flex to sit there unutilized for a period of time.
And once it was occupied, you would be able to have enough cash available to start renovations in either College Arms or...
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
One question. How many student beds do you have available now?
Right. It's like 53, if you indulge me, Supervisor, 2,300 we have. So the total, Michelle, can you just give me the total? We have beds on campus, please. We'll get it to you, but it's about 50, between 5,300 and 5,400, sir.
And what is the demand for student housing?
Significant. We have over 800 students on our waitlist for university-owned housing. And the foundation-owned housing has a similarly long waitlist. We believe that the addition of student housing on campus will allow us to be better neighbors to the borough by bringing those students on campus. Students are facing increased rents in off-campus housing because of the way that a monopoly has been created due to a limited number of student rental permits. So we believe that bringing students on campus is a win for the surrounding communities. Not only that, research has shown that graduation retention increases and crimes against students go down, and crimes against students can go down the more that we're able to have students on campus.
Mr. Hulman, would you mind if I asked a follow-up question to your question? Is it fair to say, Dr. Osgood, that more students want to live on campus than they were before?
Correct.
In your tenure?
Yes, and not only are we able to accommodate the number of students who want to live on campus, even at this reduced enrollment from our height in fall of 2021, the students are making their voices out that they want to live on campus so much so.
I'm just looking at the map. You have 800 students on demand, which you're not in, a lot of student housing for at this time, and you're looking to provide 128 units for this temporary housing, Richard?
Yes, sir.
How are you going to meet the demand for the other students that you feel would also need to have?
Yes, sir, that's a great question. So part of this is a housing modernization plan. It's not only the renovations, but the addition of, if we were to gain approval from the borough, the addition of a new residence hall that would be located where the existing Lawrence Hall is, which is, which is on, which, a Budsley Street.
And I just want to be firm, you have no plans at this time that this temporary student housing, which will last five years?
Yes, sir.
Would be going beyond that five-year period?
Absolutely.
Absolutely not, is that correct?
At this time, we are committed to maintain the five-year period.
And one other follow-up question, Dr. Osgood. Is it fair to say that the university faces two separate issues in this regard? One is the need to provide new student housing for the existing student housing demand, and the other being that the university has a need to renovate a large portion of the 3,000 beds you referenced, so that you have modernized, up-to-date student housing within the existing student housing stock. Is that fair?
That's very correct. For anybody who's had the opportunity to visit our campus, you will notice a distinct difference in the level of quality between the university-owned housing and that owned by our foundation partner. And it was our desire to equalize that quality gap.
And the purpose of the subject temporary student housing installation is to address the latter issue, is that correct?
That's correct.
I just want to be clear, following up on Mr. Hulman's question. The five-year language is in our ordinance, is that correct? The conditional use amendment that we made, it's in that language?
That is correct, no, sure.
So just hypothetically, if the university, for whatever reason, were not to honor that five years, what rights to the township retain?
May I address that, Mr. Becher?
I was just, well, sure. I was just going to say, I believe there was a mechanism in the ordinance that allowed for amended conditional use, but I'll let Mr. Nagel know.
That's, that's, that's pretty much correct. There's a, there's a provision in the ordinance that allows the university to come back to the township and request an extension, and then the township would have to decide whether or not there were grounds to grant an extension. That's what the ordinance says.
Yes, now, I understand that that language is in there, but I think, just to sort of interpret the, the true language of that ordinance, which is five years is it unless you ask for an extension?
Absolutely.
If the modular units are not gone and we do not grant an extension, what's the course of action beyond there?
So the applicant, the university, would be, would not be in compliance with the underlying zoning of the township? And just like any other zoning non-compliance, the township could issue notices of zoning enforcement, violation notices, so to speak, and could take enforcement actions against the university. I'll leave it at that for now.
Okay, thank you.
At the same time, it's anticipated, of course, that the university will be in the process of obtaining, on the first issue that I asked Dr. Osgood about, obtaining conditional use approval for a master plan totally separate apart from this application. So there's multiple things ongoing in the township and in the borough.
I understand. This master plan, when do you anticipate this is going to be released and presented to the township for conditional use consideration?
And, and, I think what we said in prior meetings is, by the end of the year, the university is supposed to have it in the fall.
Yes, sir, that's correct.
You don't have any more definite date as far as when you guys are going to be going to put it? We were waiting for years for this.
Understood, but, and we've discussed that, that's not the subject of this application, but I do understand your question. The university is working with you and Cole as a consultant, preparing that plan. So the university has to rely on you and Cole completing the plan, giving it to the university. The university has to have an opportunity, obviously, to review it, evaluate it, make any changes that the university wants in accordance with its plans. Obviously, it's working closely with you and Cole. And then, once that's completed, the university can share it with the township, share it with the borough.
Madam Chair, would I be permitted to ask two questions to the witness? Dr. Osgood, the 5,300 or 5,400 beds that you referenced, is that just on the super block on North Campus, or does that include the Village and South Campus apartments?
Yes, sir, it's our entire, entire house, it's our, it includes the South Campus housing as well.
Okay. And then you mentioned a bond financing process for like large capital projects. Once you kind of start that process, how long does it typically take to finalize and secure the necessary financing?
Todd, you want to? Could you tell me, Todd, and I'll say?
Oh, yeah. I mean, typically, we'll do it once a year, so we could put an application in, because what?
I'm sorry, you're not, you're not sworn in, so either you know or you don't.
So let's just stop there. The gentleman that's giving the answer, if you could just identify yourself for the court reporter?
My name's Todd Murphy, I'm vice president for financing administration.
I think it would be quicker and easier if we just swore you, so that you could provide an answer to this question.
Sure.
Raise your right hand, you swear the testimony about the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God, or so you affirm.
So, Mr. Murphy, what would be the typical process, or what would be the typical length of time between when you apply and when you're able to secure financing for a large capital project?
I would say probably about six months would be the normal timeframe. The way it works is the system office will bundle other projects together, because we cannot go out and secure financing ourselves, because we're part of the state system. So for instance, if Norrisville has a bed project, they would bundle those, that project together with ours, to be able to out for the public.
Thank you.
Mr. McCarthy, do you have any questions for Mr. Murphy?
No, sir, not at this time.
Thank you. Let's continue.
Are there any other questions of Dr. Osgood from the board?
Not from the board, but I have one. I think what we're talking about here is a six-year period all-in, because, Mr., Dr. Osgood, is, are you aware of a borough zoning ordinance provision 8474-D7? That sets a 12-month limitation from the time in which conditional use approval is granted to the time in which a building permit must be obtained or a certificate of use and occupancy.
Mr. Jennings, I would suggest that, that Dr. Osgood hasn't testified about any borough ordinances, you mean the West Ocean ordinance?
I'm sorry, the West Ocean ordinance. And he did speak of a present one-year period, so what I'm getting at is, there is a one-year limitation that this township imposes after conditional use approval is granted. So I'm asking if the applicant is aware of that time requirement?
And you're saying that's a one-year limitation on what?
After conditional use approval is granted, to pull a building permit or a use and occupancy permit where no building permit is otherwise required.
Are you talking about the modular home, modular beds?
Yes.
We would, we would be well within that time period. But we don't, we don't need the financing for that.
Okay.
So you would, you would pull a permit? Would they pull a permit?
No, the, the university would not pull a permit. University buildings are within the province of Commonwealth of Pennsylvania Department of Labor and Industry, so to put the, to put the temporary modular student housing installation in, the university would secure a permit from LNI.
So would that fall under our requirements, or would that satisfy West Ocean requirements, Mr. Jennings?
Yes, so if conditional use approval were granted for this application, what I'm getting at is, the applicant would have a one-year period to obtain all necessary permitting for the project. And I'm asking if the applicant is aware of that timeframe. And that would be consistent with the testimony that Dr. Osgood gave. He cited a one-year period, but it's not 11 months or 13 months, it is strictly 12 months.
It, it sounds like we're well within that period. I would have to look at that ordinance and make a determination as to whether that applies to an LNI permit. I don't know if it does or it doesn't, but we, it sounds like we're going to adhere to it either way, and we can check that as a follow-up if the board grants a conditional use.
Mr. Nagel, do you mind if I could just say that we actually have the money right now for modular housing? So I'm not, we're, we do not need to go to out for bonds for that particular project. We're prepared and have already identified them. Should we be seeking approval to do that immediately? So we do not, so the six months that Mr. Murphy is discussing with does not apply to this particular portion of the renovation plan.
Understood, thank you.
Just for clarification, is, so when you pull your permits for electrical and funding, so you'll be doing it under the Pennsylvania Department of Relations in the neighborhood industry, not with the township? Does the township will not be doing any inspections of this proposed facility once it's being constructed?
Not of the buildings. The township would have, would have the ability to inspect site improvements, and Mr. Kolokowski could speak to that, but the township does not inspect university buildings.
Mr. Kevin, yes, that's correct. The township will not be inspecting the buildings. The township will be inspecting the access, site improvements outside the buildings, sewer connections, or the life safety connections outside. Sanitary sewer is still falling under our jurisdiction for the connection with the main, but once they get to the buildings, the buildings themselves, the modular units, that is all under LNI jurisdiction.
How long is it going to take to install these modular units?
I think a different witness could probably answer that question, Mr. Wolman.
Are there any other questions for the board for this witness? No.
Any redirect, Mr. Nagel? I don't have anything else, thank you, thank you. Please call your second witness. The applicant calls Michelle Ginsburg.
Raise your right hand, you swear the testimony about the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God, or so you affirm.
Thank you.
Ms. Ginsburg, can you please state your name, spell your last name, and indicate your position with the university?
Michelle Ginsburg, G.I.N.S.B.U.R.G., and I'm the executive director for Facility Support of Auxiliary Buildings.
And are you familiar with the, with the project that the university has applied for conditional use approval, being the temporary student housing installation at M1 lot?
I am.
Do you know the answer to Mr. Wolman's question in terms of how long it will take to install the temporary student housing?
We estimate about four months.
The, the temporary student housing installation is proposed on M1 lot. Can you articulate how that lot was selected?
We looked for an existing parking lot that was viable, but also had minimal impact on surrounding residents, and it was also be able to be restored once the temporary housing was removed.
Prior to pursuing this conditional use application, did you, did you participate in the university's pursuit of having the township zoning ordinance amended to allow the temporary student, student housing?
Yes.
So this is not the first time this project has been reviewed by the township, is that correct?
That's correct.
Is it fair to say that the plan that we're presenting to the board supervisors tonight has been reviewed by the township staff, the township planning committee, the township planning commission, and the township board supervisors prior to the adoption of the applicable zoning ordinance amendment?
Yes.
I'm going to show you an exhibit marked A3 for identification. And that's marked as A3, A, B, C, so we'll go through them. If you could use the A3A, A3B, whatever sticker is on there, assuming you can read it hopefully.
I would only throw up.
If you could run through that.
So this is the overall PowerPoint presentation that we've been using throughout the project?
Excuse me, Ms. Ginsburg, I interrupt you. Mr. Kolokowski, can you pull this up on the projector?
Madam Chair, can we take a brief recess?
Yes.
Yes.
Either side, Mike, either side.
We'll read off the hearing record. that the applicant is wanting to go through.
Okay, I think we're ready to reconvene.
Okay, so we now have A-three and the subsequent, A-three A and the subsequent A-three exhibits up on the screen so everybody can see those. Ms. Ginsburg, could you run through those exhibits, please?
Sure. Next page, please. So this is just the overall campus map, and it highlights East Campus, and then the M-one lot is in the purple identified circle there. We can go on to the next page. This is an exterior rendering of the mobile modular project that we are proposing. The next page. This is our overall site layout. What I want to go over, there are twenty buildings, and the smaller buildings that will be five-bedroom buildings. Then we have the larger building, which you will see here as Building Twenty-One, that will have twenty-eight students residing there. And then what's listed here is the amenities building will be a common area building for students. Two other points to note, the community will be fenced in, and there will be gates on all exits and entrances, just like all of our other residence halls on campus, though for students and visitors, there'll be only one point of entry, which is the blue circle on the top right-hand side or corner of that PowerPoint. The other entrances will only be used for emergency exit, and any student needing accessibility access from any of our ramps will have access to those car readers. Next slide.
Can we go back, just so I can ask you another question about that previous slide, please?
Sure.
Is the entrance point located in an area to direct the pedestrian traffic as best as possible to the High Street corridor?
Yes. When we did the site layout, we intentionally put the entrance at that corner to prevent students from taking Matlak and encouraging students to take the High Street corridor.
So that exit there leads to the Eobull sidewalk system, which leads to essentially the corner of High and Rosedale?
That's correct. Next slide, please. This is just a rendering of the five-bed modular interior. It just shows that there'll be five private bedrooms with individual bathrooms. I'm going to show you the next slide, just the interior renderings here. They will be fully furnished, they will have mini refrigerators, microwaves, and again the private bath.
And you're looking at-
This is an interior rendering of the five-bed.
And that's exhibit A-three-
C.
C. And A-three B was more or less a floor plan?
A-three A.
A-three A, yeah.
So the one prior-
Yes.
That's essentially a floor plan, and it's marked A-three B, correct?
Yes, it's marked A-three B.
Okay, continue, please.
A-three G, this is the floor plan for the twenty-eight-bed modular. This is fourteen double rooms, so two students per room with bathrooms in the hallways, again fully furnished. This is just some sample interior photos of a typical twenty-eight-bed building. Sorry, this is A-three H. The next slide, A-three I, is the common area building, so that is the building that was on the top right-hand corner of our site plan. This will be a common area building with laundry, there'll be a professional staff members office there, study space, and packaging hang-on.
I presume there's going to be fire protection system installed throughout all these modules. Could there be any sprinklers installed?
There is, they're fully sprinkled.
Are they staffed?
Yes, we will have, our residents' life program will be in this community, we'll have REs living within the buildings, and we will have a professional staff member that oversees the building.
And on the plan that showed all the different buildings, there are individuals standalone modular units, and they are not interconnected, correct?
That's correct. The next slide here, A-three J, this is our shuttle bus service. So we currently have a shuttle bus that's our uptown loop, and it actually services that M-lot area. It has fifteen stops throughout the Borough and East Bradford. If you move to the next slide-
Before you go to the next slide, Ms. Ginsburg, just briefly, this is an existing shuttle bus service, correct?
Correct. The next slide, A-three K, this is a new proposed shuttle that we are adding, if the modular project is approved, for late-night shuttle. It will service Thursday through Saturday evenings from 6:00 p.m. to 2:00 p.m. We have gotten feedback, so we will extend it to 2:30 if necessary to address students in the Borough, and that is to encourage our students and reduce any late-night foot traffic.
And this is a new shuttle service that would be added in conjunction with the temporary modular housing, correct?
Correct.
And you said 6:30 p.m. to 2:00 p.m.?
Six-thirty, yes.
You meant 6:00 p.m. to 2:00 a.m.?
Correct.
And somewhere in the discussions, I'm not sure if I remember exactly, with the township planning committee or the township planning commission, there was a discussion about whether this could be extended to 2:30 a.m. instead of 2:00 a.m. Would that be acceptable to the university?
Yes, it would.
Has the population, would it be for future uses?
No, there would be no objection to that, Mr. Helman. Has the plan, the temporary student modular plan, been reviewed by the township fire marshal and the Westchester University Chief of Police for life safety and related issues?
Yes, it has, and there are no current issues that weren't addressed.
I have no further questions for this witness.
Mr. McCarthy, any questions on behalf of the fire company for this witness?
Two questions. What was the timeline on the installation for those?
Approximately four months.
Four months, okay. Just another question, because I know it's going to be brought back to my attention. Was this reviewed with the fire department, with the Westchester Fire Department, with the fire chief?
We met with Andrea Testa.
She's the fire marshal for the township, I'm talking about the fire chief of the Westchester Fire Department, who will be responding to any type of incident that occurs and use modular houses.
Yeah, we could talk to the Westchester Fire Chief, but the response issues were addressed with the township fire marshal, this is located in the township, and also with the university chief of police, as the witness testified.
Okay, no, I do understand that, and I can clearly get that, but yeah, as long as the fire chief's also aware of what's going on over there. Okay. No other questions, sir?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Ginsburg, can I ask you a question, please? Can you tell me on this exhibit, A-three K, so I see M-one lot, and that's where we're talking about the modular units being installed, right?
Correct.
So where is the stop that they would have, where would they catch the shuttle?
There's four, there's multiple stops, let me read it to you. So there will be a Church Street stop, Swope and M Lot, Rosedale and Franklin, Walnut and Minor, and then Minor and High Street, and that'll run every twenty minutes.
So what's the closest one to the modular units?
It would be Swope and M Lot.
Which is, can you point to it on the exhibit?
There's a pointer up there on the casket.
Right here.
And just so that I understand the direction that the students will be walking, I see the, I forgot which exhibit it was, where you had the blue circle indicating the entrance to the units?
So they will be exiting the corner of this stop, I mean, it's right here. Actually, if you can go back to, I believe it's the site plan. D?
Yes, D.
So this is the primary entrance for all students, and the shuttle bus will be up towards this way, towards Swope.
Okay, and that's the closest shuttle that this would catch?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I have one question. How many are, I'm sorry, how many REs were there deemed for the twenty-eight beds?
We're currently working that out, but there will approximately be four to six REs.
Thank you.
Ms. Ginsburg, I have a question for you. So on the proposed new shuttle bus service, why is the route shown going up South Franklin Street, did it not be better having stopped at the edge to come back down Rosedale, stay on the, stay there? Why is it going up through the neighborhood?
Why is it going up Franklin? I don't know, but we can evaluate that with our shuttle bus manager.
I have another question. Go to A-three D, which is the layout of the temporary modular buildings. What drove the decision to have one twenty-eight-unit building, Building Twenty-One, and twenty-five buildings to five? Why not more than the twenty-eight, reduce footprint or cost, whatever else?
It was based on availability. These were available beds from modular temporary housing company.
And that sort of allows you to get this done in four months if it was approved?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Certification on the shuttle bus service. Currently, you have a shuttle bus service which operates from twelve p.m. to twelve p.m. with sixteen stops there currently. So you're proposing another shuttle service on top of that?
Correct.
To operate independently of that?
Correct.
So there'll be a four-hour overlap between these two shuttle services?
Correct.
Okay, so you're going to have A-three J operating from twelve to ten, and then A-three K will be operating from six to 2:30?
Yes. That is correct.
I don't think we have any further questions.
Mr. Nagel, any redirect for this witness?
I do not, thank you.
Can you call your third witness?
Applicant calls Michael Joyce.
Andy, swear a testimony about the property, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God, or so you affirm?
I do.
Mr. Joyce, can you state your name and place of employment?
Michael Joyce, civil engineer with Chester Valley Engineers.
And you're a Pennsylvania licensed civil engineer?
Yes.
With the exhibit that you have on the stand, could you identify A-five, is that your CV or resume?
It's correct, A-four.
A-four. And can you summarize your experience briefly for the board, please?
Yes, I'm a civil engineer, I've been employed for eighteen years, and I've been licensed since 2012.
And do you work in the area of land development?
Yes, I worked in land development in southeastern PA during that time as a consultant engineer.
And do your duties in regular practice as a civil engineer working in land development include all aspects of land development, including site layout, stormwater, parking, interior circulation, and all other relevant land development issues?
Yes, that's correct.
Have you been accepted as an expert in that regard in municipalities throughout Chester County?
Yes, I have, including in West Goshen Township.
I would so offer, Mr. Joyce.
As an expert in what specifically?
Civil engineering for land development, including all of the disciplines that Mr. Joyce testified about.
Mr. Joyce, you indicated being licensed for twelve years, is that entire twelve-year duration in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania?
It is.
Mr. McCarthy, do you have any questions as to this gentleman's qualifications? He was offered as an expert in civil engineering for land development. Thank you. Do any board members have questions of this witness as it pertains to his qualifications as an expert for which he was offered?
All right, we are back on the hearing record, and Mr. Joyce will be accepted by this board for these proceedings as an expert witness in the field of civil engineering for land development.
Thank you. Mr. Joyce, now we can go to exhibit A-five. Is that the plan set that you prepared for the temporary student housing installation?
It is.
And in the context of preparing that plan, you can confirm that Westchester University of Pennsylvania, the state system of higher education, and or the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania is the owner of the subject property?
It is.
Can you please provide an overview of the site plan you prepared for the subject project?
Certainly. This plan is similar to the exhibit Ms. Ginsburg referenced. I will note that the view is rotated ninety degrees, that north is more or less up. East Campus Drive borders the site to the north, South Matlak Street borders the site to the east. There are twenty-five-unit modular buildings, a twenty-eight-bed double occupancy unit, denoted Building Twenty-One. There's also the amenities building, the top left corner of the screen. The site is enclosed by fencing. There are access gates provided at each corner of the overall development, and those access gates are card-controlled. There's also trash collection provided at the southwest corner of the area. There are also steps and ramps provided to access decking. You can also note that the units themselves would be elevated above the existing parking lot, and the decking would also be elevated and provide access to the units themselves, which would be elevated approximately forty inches above the pavement surface.
And the units are located on the existing pavement of the M-one parking lot?
Correct. The units themselves would be supporting foundations, which would all be on existing pavement.
How many, and is a building separation of eight feet maintained as a minimum between the buildings?
It is.
How many existing parking spaces are there being temporarily taken away to accommodate those modular units?
There would be one hundred and forty spaces temporarily removed as a result of this development.
And how many parking spaces are there in M-one lot where this installation is being placed?
There are currently two hundred and six spaces in the M-one lot.
So after the installation of the temporary student housing, there will still be sixty-six parking spaces in M-one lot, is that correct?
Correct.
How many new spaces, if any, are being set aside at the university?
At College Arms, there will be twenty-seven parking spaces set aside, and at 204 Carter Drive, which is across the street along Matlak Street, there will be thirty-six parking spaces available.
And those are currently unused parking spaces, is that correct?
Yes.
Did you conduct a parking study to analyze the number of available spaces in the area of M-one lot during peak usage?
We did. We conducted a study on a Wednesday during the school year, and we determined that in M-lot, there are four hundred, M-lot, which borders this site to the north across East Campus Drive, there are four hundred and twenty-eight parking spaces, twenty-four of which were open. In M-one lot, as referenced, there are two hundred and six parking spaces, fifty-one of which were open, and there's an additional forty-space lot adjacent to the abandoned practice field to the south of this development, where there are forty parking spaces, and eighteen of which are unoccupied.
Can you identify exhibit A-six, please?
Yes. Exhibit A-six is a graphical representation of the overview I just gave regarding the parking study that was conducted during the school year on a Wednesday, representing the peak usage demand.
And does A-six show the numbers that you just summarized?
It does. So after the installation of the temporary student housing, there will still be sixty-six parking spaces in M1 lot, is that correct?
Correct.
How many new spaces, if any, are being set aside at the university?
At College Arms, there will be twenty-seven parking spaces set aside, and at 204 Carter Drive, which is across the street along Matlock Street, there would be thirty-six parking spaces available.
And those are currently unused parking spaces, is that correct?
Yes.
Did you conduct a parking study to analyze the number of available spaces in the area of M1 lot during peak usage?
We did. We conducted a study on a Wednesday during the school year, and we determined that in M lot, there are four hundred, M lot, which borders this site to the north across East Campus Drive, there are four hundred and twenty-eight parking spaces, twenty-four of which were open. In M1 lot, as referenced, there are two hundred and six parking spaces, fifty-one of which were open. And there's an additional forty space lot adjacent to the band practice field to the south of this development, where there are forty parking spaces, and eighteen of which are unoccupied.
Can you identify exhibit A6, please?
Yes. Exhibit A6 is a graphical representation of the overview I just gave regarding the parking study that was conducted during the school year on a Wednesday, representing the peak usage demand.
And does A6 show the numbers that you just summarized?
It does.
And how about the Matlock Street parking garage? That's also located in proximity to M1 lot, correct?
Correct. And we've confirmed with university's parking services that there are four hundred and seventeen spaces in the garage, and at peak demand, there are eighty-three open spaces within the parking garage.
So how many spaces are available today during peak usage?
During peak usage, between M lot, M1 lot, the band practice field lot, and the parking garage, there are one hundred and seventy-six available spaces at peak demand.
So if you take from that the one hundred and forty spaces that are being occupied by the modular student housing installation, is my math correct, that there should still be thirty-six open parking spaces at peak demand?
That's correct.
And then you would add to that the twenty-seven at College Arms, and the thirty-six at 204 Carter Drive, correct?
Correct. So a total of ninety-nine additional parking, or available parking spaces.
So based on the analysis you conducted, it would be your opinion that during peak usage, after the installation of the temporary modular student housing facility, there would be ninety-nine available spaces?
That's correct.
And what's the total net loss of spaces?
Setting aside the College Arms and the 204 Carter Drive spaces, it is a reduction of seventy-seven parking spaces.
The Go ahead.
I'm sorry. Let me correct that. So it's a hundred and forty spaces being removed, and when College Arms and 204 Carter Drive spaces are included, it is a net loss of seventy-seven parking spaces.
How is the parking allocated under the existing, on the overall site, under the existing zoning approvals for EO Bowl and the School of Music?
Under the last land development plan, which was for the EO Bowl renovation some years ago, those plans provided for one thousand two hundred and ninety-seven parking spaces. And at that time, the university was allowed to set in reserve one hundred and eighty-four parking spaces. In other words, those spaces, those one hundred and eighty-four spaces were never built, and it was permitted that they would not need to be built unless parking demand increased to the point that they were needed, and that's directed by the township.
So the one hundred and eighty-four spaces that are set aside pursuant to the EO Bowl renovation, recorded, approved land development plan, are still available today?
Correct.
And under those approvals, the township could require the university to build out some or all of the reserved one hundred and eighty-four parking spaces?
That's correct. Again, to date, that demand has not been necessary.
But that makes sense based on the parking surpluses that you found when you conducted a study of the parking in that total area, correct?
Correct.
But if there was a parking shortfall as a result of the temporary student housing, the township could require the university to build the additional spaces in the reserve area?
That's correct.
And it's fair to say that's what we generally refer to as the band practice field?
Yes, to the south of M1 lot.
With respect to the seventy-seven spaces that you mentioned, did you look at the reserve area and evaluate whether an additional seventy-seven parking spaces could be accommodated in addition to the one hundred and eighty-four spaces that are within the reserve area today, that are designated on the reserve area, which is a grass field today, correct?
Correct. And that area would also be sufficient to accommodate the potential seventy-seven additional parking spaces in reserve.
Are you anticipating, given that the temporary student housing facility is accommodating existing student housing that's being emptied, are you anticipating any additional parking demand as a result of the temporary student housing?
No.
But your testimony is that if there was a practical shortfall of parking, there's one hundred and eighty-four reserve space area plus that area, that field, could also accommodate an additional seventy-seven parking spaces or more?
That's correct.
Could you please look at A7 and A13 and review those for the board?
Sure. A7 shows the recorded EO Bowl renovation land development plan, and identifies the reference reserved parking area for the one hundred and eighty-four parking spaces. In this plan, it's on the right-hand side, and we have annotated on this plan the red dash line and the red note where the potential seventy-seven additional parking spaces could be preserved.
And could you point that out, where that is on A7, it's on the screen, please? And how about A13?
A13 is similar to A7 in that it's the EO Bowl renovation land development plan that shows the reserved parking area for the one hundred and eighty-four spaces that was approved at the time of that land development.
And that's the recorded, that's one of the recorded sheets of the approved EO Bowl renovation plan from when the university performed the EO Bowl renovation, correct?
That's correct.
And that shows the reserved parking area on the recorded plan, correct?
Yes.
And so that's the one hundred and eighty, on A13, we don't have that on the screen, but it's in the packet. A13 shows the one hundred and eighty-four space reserve area that's recorded, correct?
Correct, the location of the band practice field.
And you're saying, based on A7, the evaluation that you conducted, that could be expanded to accommodate at least another seventy-seven spaces, if not more?
Yes, that's correct.
In your professional opinion, will the parking accommodate the proposed temporary student housing and also comply with the township's existing zoning requirements?
Yes.
Can you review, can you go back to A5, your plan, or any plan in the exhibit packet that you'd like to use, and review the pedestrian flow and circulation on the plan?
Sure. As noted, the student housing will be enclosed by fencing, and there are four access gates, the four corners of the overall development. The units themselves would be accessed by decking. Since the parking lot is sloped, the units themselves would be periodically stepped down as the greater the parking lot slopes. In this case, the high point is along the south edge of the development, and the lowest spot is along East Campus Drive. And to deal with that change in grade, there would be ramps provided along the decking that's connecting the units. There are steps at the main entrance to the, I'll call it the main gate, and also steps at the northeast corner. There are ADA accessible ramps up to the decking provided at the southeast and southwest corners. And connections to the existing sidewalk system are provided from these northeast and northwest locations.
In your opinion, does the facility provide safe and convenient pedestrian access and internal circulation within the grounds of the facility, including for points of access from the facility to parking areas?
Yes.
Will this project be served by public water?
It will. Aqua Pennsylvania provides the water service to this site currently, and we have confirmed with them that they're sufficient service to provide water for the modular units.
Can you please identify exhibit A8?
A8 is the, it's commonly referred to as a will serve letter from Aqua Pennsylvania, confirming sufficient capacity for servicing the project.
Is there also sufficient capacity for domestic service as well as for fire supply?
There is.
Have you confirmed that the fire company that will provide fire protection has adequate equipment to reach the highest points of the proposed buildings with hoses and ladders?
Yes, insofar as the units themselves will be twelve to fifteen feet above the parking lot. So any fire company would be able to access the building with standard equipment.
Will the project be served by public sewer?
It will. And we've confirmed with the township that the existing sewer has sufficient capacity to accommodate the projected sewer flows for the units. And we've also received exemption from sewage facilities planning from the Department of Environmental Protection.
Would you identify exhibit A8, please?
A9.
A9, thank you.
A9 is the letter from Department of Environmental Protection indicating that the project would be exempt from sewage facilities planning.
Will the proposed public sewer service for this project comply with all applicable regulations?
It will.
Have you provided for any necessary stormwater management in conjunction with the project?
Yes. There is existing stormwater facilities on site that will remain and will continue to function to mitigate stormwater runoff from the parking lot, which will remain. And I've confirmed that this project would require stormwater management by way of a small sewage bed that will be provided, and the details of which will be included in the assuming conditional uses. Granted, the next step would be either land development or grading permit as the township determines, and the details of that stormwater facility would be provided at that time.
But you have confirmed that you can install that small area that's needed?
Yes.
Will there be any increase in surface runoff at the boundaries of the premises beyond that presently exists?
No.
Is it fair to say that all of the property that surrounds the proposed temporary student housing facility is owned by the university, including those properties that are across Matlock Street?
Yes, that's correct.
How far away are the closest residences?
The nearest residence is on Juta Lane to the south, across the band practice field, and that to the arthis, or rather, to the nearest modular unit. The distance from that residence is approximately five hundred and fifty feet.
Are those residences screened today from the project site?
Yes. Along the band practice field boundary, abutting those properties, there is an existing row of mature evergreen trees.
I'm showing you exhibit marked A10 for identification. Can you please identify that exhibit?
A10 is an aerial view of the existing conditions overlaid with the proposed site plan, and markers, numbered markers indicate locations of subsequent photos showing the existing improvements.
So the numbers shown on A10, one through thirteen, show the location of photographs that your office has taken?
Correct.
And does the image shown in A10 accurately reflect the site as it exists generally today?
Yes.
Can you review the one through thirteen photos for the members of the board, please?
Yes. In reference to A10A, photo one is a view along East Campus Drive, adjacent to the Matlock Street garage. This is a view looking towards Matlock Street, and the existing canopy trees within the M1 lot are visible on the right-hand side of that field. Photo two is from roughly the same location, looking south. The Matlock Street garage is on the right-hand side, M1 lot is on the left-hand side, and the existing canopy trees within M1 lot are visible here as well. Photo three is from within M1 lot, looking east toward Matlock Street. View four is similar to photo three, looking east toward Matlock Street, and the fence along the band practice field is also visible on the right-hand side of that photo. In reference to exhibit A10B, view five is within the M1 lot, looking roughly southwest. Parking garage is on the right-hand side, and the band practice field, as well as the mature evergreen screening along the residence on Juta Lane is visible as well. View six, looking south, again, towards the band practice field, the existing chain-link fence along the band practice field is visible here. View seven is a view closer to the band practice field, showing the fencing along the field and mature evergreen screening along the boundary abutting the residences. View eight is of the band practice field and the mature evergreen screening along the residential boundary. In reference to A10C, view nine is looking towards the west, with the band practice field on the left-hand side, along with the existing chain-link fence. Existing trees within the parking lot are visible as well on the right-hand side. View ten is a similar view focused on the M1 lot and the existing trees within the parking lot. View eleven is looking north along Matlock Street, with M1 lot on the left-hand side, and again, the existing canopy trees within the parking lot are visible. View twelve is from across Matlock Street, looking towards the intersection with East Campus Drive. Moving on to A10B, view thirteen is from the intersection of Matlock Street and East Campus Drive. That's across the street from the site, looking back towards the southwest, towards M1 lot.
You were here this evening during Dr. Osgood's testimony, during Ms. Ginsburg's testimony, is that correct?
That's correct.
If I refer you back to exhibit A3D for a moment? And in connection with what we saw in photograph number eight that you just reviewed for the board, is it? So A3D shows the layout that Ms. Ginsburg reviewed, correct?
Correct.
And the fence line that we saw and the field beyond it in photo number eight that you reviewed, that would be all the way to the left of this plan, correct?
Correct.
So where the modular units are being located on the site is actually set back from the field, further away from the, from the band practice field, and further away from the Juta Lane residences that are about two football fields. Junta Lane residences that are about two football fields away from the site. And there's a drive aisle, another, three rows of parking and another drive aisle. It's the first place where you have a modular unit, is that correct?
Yes.
Can we please go back to A10? Mr. Joyce? Do you recall reviewing this application with the West Ocean Township Planning Commission?
Yes.
And during that meeting, the planning commission asked about trees that need to be removed as part of the installation of the modular student housing, correct?
Correct.
Can you identify where those trees are, on whichever plan would be most advantageous to look at for that purpose?
On this plan, the two island, two existing curb islands that will be affected are probably here and here, and if you reference exhibit A10A, we'd use 3, view 3 would primarily show the trees to be impacted.
And so that's a few trees on the interior of that existing parking lot, correct?
Correct.
And the planning commission had asked about whether the applicant could look at planting some replacement trees around the perimeter of the site, generally equal to the amount of trees that are being removed, is that correct?
That's correct, and it could be accommodated around the periphery of M1 lot.
In your opinion, are the buffer areas provided within the applicant's property sufficient to effectively screen the proposed conditional use from adjoining uses?
Yes.
And would it be your testimony that that's the case even if the university did not replant the trees that are being removed on the interior of the parking lot area where the temporary student housing units are being placed?
Yes. The existing evergreen screening along the southern boundary of the band practice field effectively screens existing residences and the surrounding properties and uses our university owned or operated.
But notwithstanding that fact, you don't see any problem with installing some additional screen plantings on the perimeter of the site?
Correct.
In your opinion, is there adequate screening and buffering provided to screen the facility that's proposed here this evening from view and preclude glare from lighting or noise from impacting adjacent or nearby residential properties?
Yes. In addition, as has been discussed, the units would be enclosed by fencing. These are enclosed units. There's no gathering, outside gathering area for use by the students.
In your opinion, are the building structure and parking and street setbacks from adjoining properties sufficient to remove any potential adverse impact or interference with any adjoining uses?
Yes.
I have no further questions from Mr. Joyce. Mr. McCarthy, any questions for Mr. Joyce?
I just want to confirm one thing. The access road on the west side next to the parking garage, is that to remain open?
Yes.
Thank you.
I want to try to tighten up the talk of the tree removal and tree replacements. Mr. Nagle used the term "a few trees." Are we specifically talking about three, or is it yet to be determined how many, exactly how many trees will be removed or need to be removed?
If I can reference the plan, I could give you the exact number. I believe it's...
Isn't it shown on A5, second sheet?
Correct. I count 16 trees.
Okay, so more than a few. And then as far as planting additional trees, would the applicant, if this board were inclined to grant an approval, be agreeable to a condition in which the university would need to plant at a minimum the amount of trees as replacement trees as those coming down?
I can answer that question, it would.
Okay.
And where exactly would they be planted?
What was discussed with the planning commissioner, Commissioner, Mr. Homan, was to see if some of those could be placed along the fence, on the edge of the practice field, and then there's a few other areas where some trees could be at.
Where would they be?
Mr. Joyce would have to evaluate that and see where they could fit, what species could fit in those areas, and then lay that out on the grading or land development plan.
Well, the interest from our perspective would be to fly a buffer between proposed temporary housing and student residences.
And that's what we talked about with the planning commission, where we would try to focus those plantings. You can't, if you look at the photos very closely, you can't really see many of the improvements on the back of the houses along Junta Lane, but on the lower part of the tree canopy where the trunks are, you can see through to some of the back areas of those properties. So some lower screening plantings in that area would sort of fill that gap, but that's something that Mr. Joyce is going to have to take a look at, and that we can show to the township as part of the grading or land development plan approval.
Is the applicant agreeable to not only speaking with the township, but allowing the township to play an active role in those determinations ultimately as to where those replacement trees are located?
Absolutely.
Any questions by members of the board?
I have some questions about the parking spaces. What is available to be left remaining? Will they be assigned to the students who are going to be in the temporary student housing?
It's my understanding that all of the parking is permit parking, but I'm not aware that they would specifically within M1 lot be set aside for the modular housing students.
So they're not assigned by a unit, per se? So there'd just be general parking, but you have to have a permit, you know, if you have a parking in these spaces, but they're not necessarily assigned to students who live in the temporary housing?
Mr. Homan, if I may, in order to answer those types of questions about the available parking, we'd have to have one of the university witnesses address that.
Oh, okay, so he can't do this?
Not as well as, he could, but not as well as a university witness could.
All right, well, let me ask you another question that maybe you can't answer. Do you have any idea how many of these students who might be taking residence here in the temporary student housing will have vehicles? I mean, do you have any restrictions on students and their ability to have vehicles on campus?
Would it be okay if we have Ms. Ginsburg answer a few of these questions, or whichever university witness could answer it?
Well, can I just maybe answer, or at least see if I understand?
Sure.
There are no additional students being added to the enrollment with these modular units.
That's correct.
Whatever students on campus would be living somewhere else or driving their own cars anyway, are only going to be moving to these modular units. There won't be any additional vehicles, is that correct? That is correct.
So could I follow up with a question from Ms. Ginsburg? So it would seem sensible that if you have students living in modular housing, that there is some assignment of parking, because Mr. Joyce testified to all these various spaces being available, but they were kind of scattered. So someone in the garage, some remained in M1, there was maybe one or two left in, there were some left in M1, then we talked about two or four Carter Drive and College Arms. It would seem to me that it would make, so they're not parking up at the College Arms and walking back to the housing, where someone who's parking near the housing is then walking into the university and the super block. So some kind of arrangement would seem to make sense to me.
That is correct. So we are planning to designate a certain amount of spaces for the modular project for residents living in that community. We do have parking, so like College Arms could be used currently right now. M1, Matlock is a commuter slash employee lot, so we could also, to make it easier, have employees parking in College Arms. So that will be through the Parking Services Department.
So how would we, we just rely on that being conditioned? How would we work this to make sure there was a thought through plan for parking? Is there anything we should do today if we were to grant this, or...
May I speak to that? I think the university would be willing to agree to a condition similar to the tree condition, that it will share that plan with the university as a condition, I'm sorry, with the township as a condition of this approval, and subjected to discussion and review, so that the township is comfortable with how that's been allocated by the university, because they're going to have to look at the specifics of that.
Not just share a plan, but to effectively collaborate with the township to determine.
We would agree with that language, thank you.
Another question regarding parking spaces. Are you planning on having any electrical vehicle charging stations installed here along with this?
Not at this time. I will say that across the street, there is currently charging, electrical charging at our Carter Drive site.
It was mentioned that there's the possibility of taking or using some of the band practice area for parking. Where would the band go then?
Again, Mr. Wellman, what we've demonstrated through the testimony and evidence is that there's ample parking today. We don't believe that that band parking will be needed. If the township felt as though there was a parking problem, it could require the university to build some or all of that reserved parking. If it did, if that came to pass, then the university would have to analyze where the band will practice, but it hasn't done that at this time, because that hasn't come up. That's been, that 184 reserve area, I can't remember exactly how long ago it was approved. I did work on it. I'm going to say, if I say it was seven years ago, that probably means it was 12 years ago, you know how that works? And it's like a few trees, it's like my potato chips. I have a few potato chips, that's probably about 25.
Mr. Nagle?
Yes, sir.
It was 15 years ago.
Say, I told you. So it hasn't come up. We don't expect that it will come up, but if it does, the university has...
I'm sorry to interrupt him, but we do have a plan. If we do have to move, it would be our south campus towards our plan to go site behind our apartments.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question for Mr. Joyce. Where does the sanitary sewer tie in?
Go to sheet, excuse me, go to the next sheet. Sanitary sewer is in East Campus Drive. There's a terminal manhole roughly here, and it flows towards High Street.
Okay, so all the new laterals and main that you need to get sewage flow to that existing manhole, the university would be responsible for the maintenance, clearing of any blockages, et cetera, that might occur in that line, is that correct? There's no new line being offered to the sewer authority in West Ocean? All this new, all this new build would be considered...
Yes.
...a university-owned lot?
Yes. At this time, it's my understanding that township would treat these as laterals, so they're not being dedicated, and there's no easement offered, so that would be the university's responsibility to maintain.
Okay, thank you. And the stormwater management assessment that you indicated required a small seepage bed. Do you have an initial idea as to where that would be located and how big might it be?
We would most likely place it within the grass area to the north of the site.
So near the amenities building?
Yes, generally speaking.
And roughly how big that might that be?
I can't say that this, I've determined that this project would qualify for the simplified method for stormwater management, which is typically applicable to, say, house addition. So that simplified method prescribes certain footprint of a seepage bed, depending on the square footage. Generally, it's 2,000 square feet or less of an impervious area that is subject to that. So ballpark, I would say, you know, four by eight is a footprint area roughly, just for discussion.
Thank you.
Any additional questions by members of the board for this witness?
No, and I will say that it's 8:20, almost 8:25. You know, we put a time limit on tonight. You have one more witness that you want to be called?
I do, and it should be fairly quick.
Right, the board, I'm unable to continue. Okay.
Is Jim okay?
Mr. Nagle, any redirect for this witness?
No, thank you.
Can you call your fourth and final witness? The applicant calls Alex Leitzler.
He's through the testimony about to vibrate the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so if you got her, so you affirm?
I do.
Can you spell your last name for me? Thank you.
What's your place of employment, please?
Traffic planning and design.
Can I ask you to identify exhibit A11?
A11 is my CV.
Can you summarize your experience for the board, please?
Yes, I've been consulting engineering for over 30 years, all of bachelor's and master's from Penn State University. I've been a licensed professional engineer in the state of Pennsylvania, I think since 1998. I think that's when I got my reciprocity. My first was licensed in New Jersey in 1997, and again, I've been doing consulting, traffic and transportation engineering for the last 30-plus years for public and private clients.
Have you been so accepted as an expert in municipalities in Chester County and elsewhere?
Yes.
I would offer the expert, I would offer the gentleman as an expert as so stated. Just to be clear, for what specifically as an expert in the field of traffic engineering?
Civil engineering, specializing in traffic engineering, review of analysis.
This witness is so recognized, please proceed.
Can I ask you to identify exhibit A12, and I'm going to ask you to just identify the full exhibit which concludes the appendices?
Yes, that is the traffic or transportation impact assessment that TPD prepared for the temporary housing as part of this application.
Can you review that report and your findings for the board, please?
Certainly. As part of the application, we review traffic operations at Matlock Street, Carter Drive, Matlock Street, East Campus Drive, Matlock Street, southern M1 lot driveway, and High Street, and East Campus Drive, as these intersections are the most pertinent, would have the greatest impact from this development. As has been stated before, this development will handle students that are already on campus. This is not new, these are not new students. This is not an increase of demand to the overall street network globally throughout campus. To provide a conservative estimate, we looked at this housing as if it was new campus housing, rather than relocation, temporary relocation of existing students. In order to assess the number of trips during the AM and PM peak hour, we use the IT Trip Generation Manual. In that manual, there are two different brand use codes for college residential campus housing. One is on campus, one is off campus. Off campus is a more conservative estimate, it provides a higher, it provides a higher estimate of traffic impact based on number of beds, so that's what we use, again, to be conservative, even though this is a relocation of existing students. In the interest of time, in the interest of time, we, using this analysis, we estimate that we have 28 new trips, trip being the exit or an entering. we estimate that we have 28 new trips, trip, a trip being the exit or an entering trip during the AM peak hour, 45 new trips during the weekday and PM peak hour. Using those trips, we distributed them based on existing trip patterns, based on accounts that we performed. And as shown in Table 1 in the executive summary, all of the projected conditions at the study intersections will remain at level of service A as they currently operate now.
So if I understand your conservative approach, you assumed off-campus even though it's not, and you assume new trips even though there are none, to make sure that your analysis was as conservative as possible?
As reasonably, yes, conservative.
In your opinion, are the streets and highways contiguous to the applicant's property sufficient to prevent adverse traffic impacts caused by the proposed temporary student housing?
Yes, they are.
Does the traffic study that you prepared establish the capacity of the road network providing access to the premises in question as to not fall below level of service C for any intersections determined to be critical to the proposed use?
Correct. As stated in Table, Table 1 Executive Summary, all study intersections operate currently and will or projected to operate level of service A.
In your opinion, are any acceleration or deceleration lanes required at the proposed entrances to the project?
No. And to please the board, we did check using the PANDOT auxiliary lane requirements and the entrances require auxiliary lines.
In, in your opinion, based on your review of the project, will the interior traffic circulation for the proposed use at the proposed location be adequate to provide safe and convenient circulation for users of this temporary student housing and visitors, employees, and emergency vehicles?
Yes.
Are all of the opinions that you've offered to the board this evening about this project drawn to a reasonable degree of professional certainty?
Yes.
I have no further questions for this witness.
Mr. McCarthy, any questions for this witness?
No questions.
Do any members of the board have questions for this witness?
No, I just have one question. That's the first time I had a chance to look at your traffic impact studies. I haven't really had the chance to drill it all in permission. Did you do a crash analysis as part of your assessment?
I don't want to speak out of turn. I don't want to speak out of turn.
And so do you?
I do not believe as part of our analysis, we did not do a, an accident analysis. I do not see, see what you, we hope to accelerate things.
You don't know how many sort of accidents that past five years have occurred along that road?
Not at those, not at the study intersections, no.
Don't you normally do that as part of a TIA or a crash analysis?
It depends. It depends.
What does it depend on?
Well, for being as this is a, a temporary, a temporary location, it is a very low trip generator. We, we are, we are not aware that there have been at the access points to this, to this lot, that there has been any traffic or accident safety. Nothing has been brought to our attention by the university, by, by, by really anyone throughout this entire process at this, at this particular location.
Okay.
So will the flow of traffic be substantially changed in any way, in any way that would negatively impact?
Not, not, not for the, for the low, for the very low, even conservatively what we estimate, given that these are existing cars, existing trips, existing students.
It would be just as if those students were parking there anyway from somewhere else on campus.
And, and with the low number of trips, I mean, if you take 28 trips and in the AM, say, you know, say, say they're all entering, that's what a car, every, an additional vehicle every two minutes. You know, and I mean, that, that, that's kind of what we're talking about. And it, it's not, I mean, if there was a zero on the end of that, we would be having a completely different discussion on it. But no, I mean, based on our analysis tools that we have available to us, there is, there is no projected operational change, especially given the, the student population that will be occupied, that will be rotating through these temporary.
Right, because they're just existing cars that are driving into an existing parking lot.
It's existing cars that are on your network already.
Mr. Leitzler, it, it sounds like a crash analysis isn't necessary in these circumstances, but if the township felt as though it was and made that a condition of approval, would you be able to conduct such an analysis?
Yes.
Help, help me understand when the Swoop Center was built back in 2009, would a traffic study have been done at that time? And would it, how would that match up with the required amount of parking? So would a traffic study ever consider that all parking was creating a trip? Or is the parking, number of parking spaces totally independent in terms of how you evaluate a traffic analysis?
In my experience, sir, the parking ordinance is, is generally completely separate from a traffic operational analysis, that the ordinance dictates, you know, regardless of the user, if you have X amount of square foot of this use, you shall build this number of spaces, whether you need them, whether it's enough or, or it's not, but it's usually independent of, now, that being said, could a traffic analysis show that the ordinance, you know, it, it, it depends. I cannot speak to the Swoop traffic analysis back in 2009. You know, I will say also in our post-COVID world, traffic is a very different beast than, people drive differently, their traffic patterns are different than what would have been presented back then as well, even just even pre, even pre-COVID. But to answer your question, usually the traffic analysis and the parking calculation is, is usually a separate, a separate calculation.
Thank you.
I'm, I'm just going to ask a follow-up question, and I'm going to, I'm going to violate a rule and ask a question that I don't know the answer to. In the post-COVID world that you referenced, do you know if the, the parking demands or the traffic demands are higher or lower or just different?
Generally, parking demands for most uses are lower and peak hours, instead of having big spikes in your AM and your PM, they tend to be smoother curves.
Thank you.
Support of any other questions for this witness?
Mr. Nagel, I assume no further redirect?
No, correct. I have one follow-up question for another witness, though, please.
Sure.
Mr. Joyce, you offered a number of professional opinions to the board this evening.
Correct.
Correct.
Were all of the opinions that you offered to the board drawn to a reasonable degree of professional certainty?
Yes.
I have no further questions.
Do you have any further evidence or testimony to present in support of your application?
I said that I would submit the Commonwealth blanket deeds, which include the subject properties, exhibit A1, so I'll hand those up to you and I'll ask that all of the application, all of the applicant's exhibits be admitted into the record.
Do you have a copy to provide to Mr. McCarthy?
I do.
And perhaps an extra to Mr. Long? Okay, so the board will accept into evidence in this hearing record applicant's exhibits A1 through A13. Mr. McCarthy, I assume no objection to any of those applicant exhibits?
No objection.
Thank you. Mr. Nagel, before we hear from the public, anything additional to present in support of your case in chief?
No, thank you.
Yes. We are okay for public comment. Is there any public comment?
Sure, yes. Mr. McCarthy, do you have any evidence or testimony to present?
Yes.
You'll still be afforded an opportunity to make public comment after we hear from some others, if you wish. Would anyone care to make public comment, whether it's neutral, in support of, or in opposition to tonight's application? Mr. Long?
On behalf of the borough, I'm just going to go over a couple of points. Again, I know we did not to belabor some of these, and a lot of them were addressed by Mr. Nagel and the witnesses. We appreciate that. Just wanted to bring a few other concerns to the board, just for you to think over and discuss and potentially use your conditions power to address some of them. As far as the parking, we appreciate that they've, you know, explained and gone through the loss of parking, that, you know, that there is adequate parking, they have the ability to create more spots. Just one thing that I want to bring to the board's attention is that, you know, due to some parking changes within the borough, fewer students are able to access and get parking passes in those neighborhoods just above this, as well as around the Wyeth property, if you're familiar with that, Adam Street and Neils. There were some parking areas along there. Those are going to be restricted as well. So there's, there's just a few spots in that southeast quadrant of the borough where there's going to be more restricted parking. So that might put more pressure on universities' lots on their property. We don't want numbers or anything of that nature, so the adequate parking that they've gone through might be enough, but we just wanted to bring that to your attention. The, you know, I know that they just have the traffic expert to discuss the traffic. You know, one of the concerns more for the borough's perspective is not necessarily the traffic, car traffic. Our concerns are pedestrian traffic. You're taking a number of residents and you're now moving them to, concentrating them and moving them down below Rosedale or to a different spot. You know, that's going to create different traffic flows from a pedestrian perspective. You're going to have students living down there, so that potentially more late at night, that kind of thing, there's going to be more of that crossing Rosedale and going along there. So those are, those are some of our concerns along that, along that, that aren't really addressed through the traffic, you know, impact study because they're looking at car traffic. Some of the other, you know, there are a little more general, you know, things that I think, you know, the borough's police department, as well as the township's police department and the borough's police department are all going to have to work towards is things like addressing some noise. You know, there's always that problem of students going up and down. Walnut Matlock and High Street, going back and forth from the bars, we do appreciate that they've, they're trying to address that through the shuttle losses and things like that, hopefully those can address some of those concerns. There's also concerns about keeping the site clean, keeping the area clean, preventing trash and other things from, you know, distributing through the area. So, anything else you want to? Oh, right. And, and I'm not necessarily expecting Dr. Oscar to get up here and retestify, but just doing some math on our end, it looks like there's 128 beds in that, in the development. There's roughly 3,000 beds that the university's looking to do. They're going to do 128 per semester, that, that equals out to roughly somewhere around 12 years. So, you know, that is one of the concerns is the long-term plan, and they did talk to that, and obviously they're saying that they don't have plans to go any beyond the five years, but that is the, you know, the borough's concern about this becoming sort of a permanent thing. So long-term, what the plan is, that kind of thing. So those are just some of our concerns. So, thank you.
If you could remain, I just have a follow-up question or two. You pointed out the, the parking issue, the pedestrian traffic issue being kind of the two main points as I saw. Do you have specific proposals or proposed conditions of approval that you would ask these supervisors to impose if you had the ability to influence that decision-making process? Do you have anything specific that you would like for them to consider? Or are you just going to leave them with the generality?
Yeah, all right. We'll just drop it at your feet and you guys figure that out. No, I mean, again, as, as you're well aware, this is something the borough's been wrestling with for years as to what to do with all of the traffic. It's, it's more of the, it's obviously, it's a, as was discussed, it's property that's look further in, into your township as opposed to right in the borough or on the edge of the borough. I think it's just more of one of those things that as you craft conditions, take it into account, maybe there's, there's some, you know, thought that can be put into that. We don't have any site-specific offerings for you, unfortunately.
Thank you.
Look, I have a question.
Sure.
Just your concern about pedestrian traffic and changes in routes and so forth. Were you familiar with the shuttle service that they currently have? And you also, were you familiar with the shuttle service they are closing?
Yes, I am, I mean, I personally, speaking of, I can't speak on behalf of all of council and whatnot, but yeah, we are aware that there's a, you see the ram shot going through town.
Do you have any suggestions to change that and make it more better to address that issue?
I, I do.
I know, I thought you were despised, but do you have something specific that you know, for sure?
No, I mean, I actually, the Planning Commission's option and request of extending it to 2:30, I think is an actual, is a great opportu, option because as I think the Planning Commission realized, bars let out at 2:00. So if you end it right before 2:00, you're going to miss a lot of traffic, foot traffic that's been leaving those bars and heading back down that way, back down towards university. You know, the only thing I can say is that, and I don't know that we got into the, how often the tra, the, the shuttle is going around, that kind of thing, but, you know, making it as, as often as possible, making sure that it's advertised and made well aware, you know, without, and I know sometimes it's trial and error, seeing where the route goes versus, you know, what actually would be used by students or by people. So I think some of that's going to be trial and error by the universities or trying to make sure that they're catching, you know, students where they are.
Mr. Nagel, I, I know that you want to answer some of those questions. I'm going to afford you the final opportunity tonight to speak on behalf of the applicant, and at that time you can clean up anything or supplement anything you'd like.
That's fair. Thank you, Mr. Jennings.
And obviously, I think the borough would be, you know, not speaking out of turn, say, borough would be happy to work with the university and the township on anything, since we're sharing the word in a sense of university, obviously, process between both municipalities.
And is the university open to the idea of collaborating and speaking with the borough of Westchester and its representative or representatives to the extent that this application is approved?
The university, the university, the former university president and myself met with Mr. Metrick, the borough manager, and with the then ward councilperson for the, for the ward where this project is proposed to, and partially at the request of West Coast Township, to review the plan with the, with the borough and address any concerns that they had. And that, as a result of that meeting, the late-night shuttle was added to the proposal, and that, by the way, is proposed to run every 20 minutes. I think Ms. Ginsburg said that if she didn't, that's what it is. And that is also why the access gate was oriented to drive the pedestrian traffic to the greatest extent possible through the Eobool sidewalk network to the corner of High and Rosedale, because of course, the university is aware that, that the borough and borough residents have concerns about late-night foot traffic through the Walnut Street and Matlock Street corridor. So those measures were put in place to try to address those issues. And of course, the university has and will continue to try to cooperate and collaborate with the borough to the greatest extent possible within the confines of their statutory limitations.
Mr. Nagel, the shuttle will run seven days a week? Five days a week?
Extra shuttle. The late-night shuttle will be Thursday through Saturday.
Thursday through Saturday.
The extra shuttle.
6:00 PM to the 2:30 AM.
Correct.
Technically until Sunday morning? Okay, as opposed to Saturday morning? Okay.
No, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Anne Carroll, Civic Action Southeast and a resident of the Southeast. I do have some specific things and some comments. First of all, I think you can see why the borough wanted to be a party to this because wanted to be a party to this, because some of the things that are recommended, do I need to go up there?
I think it's recommended that you should, just so our audience at home could...
Oh, sorry. I taught for 42 years, so I'm used to shouting. Sorry about that. The, well, that's why the borough wanted to be a party, and I really think they should have, but that's gone. But, so much of this involves coming through the borough with a shuttle, parking at College Arms, which is in the borough. So, having said that, one of the things I question is the parking study that was, quote, "done on a Wednesday." These parking studies need to be an average of data, not on a Wednesday, even though it was in peak period. Comment, not a suggestion for now. The RAs, I assume that the four to six are living there, but I assume that they work on shifts. So I'm wondering what the ratio of RAs on campus, so a condition for me would be that the ratio of RAs on campus be mimicked on this site. Another would be that there be a clear Westchester University Police Department patrol plan submitted for this site specifically, because our police frequently, the borough's police frequently have to answer calls, and the Edge, which is in West Goshen, has been a frequent source of problems. It is not a university-owned property, I am aware of that, but nonetheless, it is inhabited by university students, and thus. I'd like to see a come, a stabilization promise for enrollment, that during this five-year period, we are not adding enrollment, and I understand what was said about the, our role as PASHI, but we have other state universities. So to the extent that that could be done, we have done it in the past, the borough got a stabilization in the 90s, until housing was built. The shuttle, that is known by the residents when it previously existed as the drunk bus, and therefore, my recommendation would be that if that shuttle is run after 10:00 PM, and I'm not saying it's a bad idea, but if it's run after 10:00 PM, that there be a Westchester University Police Department representative riding it, just like you have for the little kids' buses for school, because unfortunately, they are not at their best at 2:30 in the morning, because the reason it's running is they're coming from the bars. So, and by the way, we were never privy to any of those discussions. The neighborhood organization that has the entire Southeast was not privy, other than through our representative, and we didn't know those discussions were occurring. So it is important that the borough be involved in stuff that's supposed to serve West Goshen, because it's gonna go through us, and I would really appreciate your consideration of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment yet?
Hi, my name's Nicole Shimoney. I am a resident of the Southeast quadrant of the borough. I am also the current Ward Four Representative for Borough Council. I am not the representative that previously met with Brian and Sean to talk about this project. I'm learning about it this year, as I'm newly elected. So, I did wanna piggyback off of some of what John was saying on behalf of the borough. You asked about questions about things that we would ask, recommend, hope for, as you guys consider this application. I really liked the ideas that came across with regards to the parking and allocating parking to the residents of these modular units. I don't know how many freshmen or anyone that you're gonna have in here. If you do have freshmen, I know there's like a, no freshmen are allowed to park on campus, but the fact of the matter is, what ends up happening is that those students park in the non-permitted spaces, or find ways to park in the borough of Westchester. And so that, I would also just ask, you know, maybe that's just in general, for you guys to kind of think about, because that is affecting our borough, that's affecting our area. You're not allowing them, but truthfully, they're still bringing their cars, they're still doing what they need to do to get to the university, especially if you don't have enough housing to begin with, they're commuting, they need to get there. So, is there a way to have more parking for those students? And a start would be some of the questions that you guys were asking earlier about at least allocating parking to the students that are living in those modular units, because as Jonathan also mentioned, they're moving from across town, they're not gonna park where they used to park, they're gonna wanna put their cars next to where they live. Part of the reasons that you said in a borough council, meaning it's not a parking problem, it's a, or a parking space problem, it's a walking problem. People aren't gonna wanna park wherever they used to park, they're gonna wanna park right there. So, park in your parking lot, hopefully not park in the borough area, wherever they can find it, especially because, again, we're taking measures or things are happening where we're gonna have fewer spots in that area, and we're gonna need them for residents. The other thing that I appreciated was, the shuttle, I did appreciate that. I would ask that, you know, there's a study, something done on like, how many, like, who's using the shuttle, is it getting used, is there a better way to advertise that shuttle? Because, I don't know, I mean, I know they're out there, I don't know how many students know about them, use them. Are they convenient for the students when they're coming back from the bars, or will they just be walking, you know? When I was a kid and I went to Westchester University, which I did, right down Walnut Street, you bet. So, walking, not riding a shuttle or anything, sometimes riding my bike, which we don't see a lot of students doing that anymore either. The other thing that I was thinking about, the entrance. I know you guys put it on the one side, and you think that students are gonna come down High Street. I'm concerned still about that, because I think that there's that driveway right there, right off of Walnut Street. I mean, I'm not gonna, I'm gonna, if I'm a student, even if I'm coming from class, I'm gonna come down Rosedale and walk down the driveway. If I'm coming from the bars, I'm gonna walk down Walnut and go down the driveway. I'm not gonna walk down High Street and then come in, I'm gonna walk down the driveway. It's bigger, there's more space, you can do it in groups, where the sidewalks, the sidewalks. So, I don't know if there's any modifications or, or anything that can be done to, it, I think the students are still gonna come down Walnut Street, they're not gonna go over to High Street. That's, that's just my opinion from knowing how people walk around town, how I walk around that, that area. So those, those are the additional thoughts that I have on top of some of the things that Jonathan's already mentioned for us, but you'd ask for suggestions, and, and just, I wanna affirm some of the comments that were already made by the, the council, the township regarding some of the parking. So, thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment? Okay, there are none.
Mr. Nagel, now is your opportunity, before we conclude, before the hearing record is closed, make any final statements, legal argument, what have you.
Just to address, thank you, Mr. Jennings, just to address a few of the points, the university already has a patrol plan, the university is obligated to patrol its entire jurisdiction, and has a plan to do so already in place. This site will be no different, it's already included, and it will be included as modified by the temporary student housing facility. The other point I'd like to address, I think Ms. Ginsburg testified to this, but just if you could confirm, the proposed temporary student housing facility is for upperclassmen only, meaning no freshmen, is that correct?
That's correct.
And also, Mr. Joyce, I'm just gonna ask you to confirm, the, the study that you conducted for the parking analysis wasn't conducted only on a Wednesday, it was conducted, if I understand correctly, correct, on a Wednesday, end of Thursday, during a peak time, as analyzed by you and as indicated by the university, is that correct?
That's correct. Open spaces counts, I referenced, were based on, I'll say, the worst of the two days, the more conservative numbers, so we did not average between the two counts. So, no, it represented, it happened to be Wednesday, but those were, worst case scenario numbers.
Finally?
I can't hear what you're saying, if you're trying to get it directly. I was just gonna chime in, just to say, I might be hoping everybody knew what time of the year, that it was during the school year, one month, I don't kinda think.
Yeah, it was during the school year, in December, maybe in December.
And finally, I would submit that all of the applicable ordinance criteria, the testimony and evidence that has been presented this evening demonstrates that the university does meet the criteria, and that the conditional use should be approved. And I thank you for your time.
Yes.
Off the record?
Okay, we're gonna, we're back on the record.
Okay. The board has conferred regarding scheduling for purposes of the issuance of a decision on this matter. What the board is going to do is render its decision at a public meeting, a regularly scheduled Board of Supervisors' public meeting, which is scheduled for Tuesday, September 3, 2024, at 6:00 PM. It will be conducted in this meeting room, and that will be within the 45-day time period for which a decision must be rendered pursuant to the Pennsylvania Municipalities' Planning Code. That date will not be read advertised. So again, that date, Tuesday, September 3, 2024, 6:00 PM, in this meeting room. Mr. Nagel, are there any additional matters to attend to prior to the closure of the hearing record?
I would just request that, in the event, respectfully request that in the event that there is a tie vote, based on the four supervisors you've sat in on the hearing, that the fifth supervisor will be afforded the opportunity to review the record and vote on the application.
We'll go off the hearing record.
Yes.
Okay, back on the hearing record. The board is inclined to grant that request, so in the event that there is a two-to-two tie vote, the third, or the fifth supervisor, Ms. Smith, will be afforded an opportunity to review the entirety of the hearing record, including hearing transcript, to participate in that voting process. Anything further?
No, thank you.
Okay. The hearing record is now closed, no additional testimony or evidence will be accepted, and tonight's hearing is hereby adjourned.
Thank you, everybody, for coming out tonight. I appreciate you being here.